Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our May 2nd, 2018 Select Board meeting. We have skipped right over spring and we have hit summer today. As you all can tell by the heat outside, I'm sure some are banking and some are just saying we could've gone a little slower. So we'll start the meeting tonight with our consent agenda. We have warrants, PR 1842, AP 1841-2, and AP 1842.
Let's make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now rolling into public comments. Good evening. Do you want any public comments this evening?
Madam Chair, these are the owners and operators. I may have got this name wrong, Cool Gem.
Cool Gem.
Cool Gem.
Cool Gem.
Korean Kitchen, they're opening in the mall this Sunday.
Well, we're going to be doing some kind of soft opening Sunday night, and then Monday is the grand opening.
Which mall?
At the Hampshire Mall.
Hampshire Mall?
Where's your, where are you located?
Right across the hall from the Pines, Walling Alley, and there's the indoor racing. We're across from that as well.
Next to Anus, the newsstand?
Yes, we're about two storefronts down from that.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
So they came in today, their opening is, the soft opening is on Sunday. They need a common picture on their license, and they didn't, so this is time-sensitive. It's coming up as item of business that the chair did on recently, it's $848 in advance.
Okay. That will be fine, do you want to take that now? Oh, I see it. We can do that now, since you're here, we have time, would that be okay?
Perfect.
Okay. Would you like to tell us anything about your establishment point?
Sure. Well, we've, we were approached, or we had spoken with Pyramid, the management company for the mall, a few months ago, and they advised us that there was an opening here at the Hampshire Mall, and we came up and we liked the area. We're from Orem, so we're not too far away, and so we came up here, loved the area up here, it's nice, country-like, and got an opportunity to look at the mall. We weren't really interested in a big, big mall, big food court, so this really kind of suited what we were looking for. They didn't have very many food venues, and so they were eager to fill that spot with another restaurant, and so it seemed like a really good match.
Is it a sit-down or you're just using the food court?
It's a, we're just using the food court. It's a quick-serve restaurant format, whereas we have the counter and there's no, there's no tables, and we're using the common dining area.
So you don't need any, you just, you don't, you're not serving alcohol or anything like that?
No, no.
You're just doing sodas and things like that?
Yeah, we have bottled cans and sodas, bottled water, and our menu is, we'd like to think it's a bit expanded. I would prefer it maybe a little smaller, but there's so many Korean dishes that they wanted to put on, we felt that it was, we can do it, so.
Okay.
Do you have bulgogi?
Yes.
All right.
And we've got a few fusion-type dishes as well, the bulgogi, the bulgogi hoagie, which is kind of a cheesesteak but with some kimchi, then we slice steak, oh, it's, it's really good.
So Sunday night, you're having a soft opening?
Yeah, well, not, what we wanted to do is, we needed an opportunity to test our equipment prior to our opening on Monday. So the mall closes at 6:00, the church that we belong to, the Korean church down in Springfield, we've invited our friends from there, they're going to come up, we're going to cook, make sure all the equipment works, and they're going to, it's like, kind of like a little celebratory event. And then Monday, we'll be doing, I guess, the grand opening, and we'll be giving free samples of some select items throughout the entire day. So it'll be a good opportunity for people who haven't been exposed to Korean food.
I haven't, I'm already ready.
Great. Getting a free, you know, a free opportunity, an opportunity to taste something for free. And if you're familiar with Asian foods, there's, there's a lot of similarities between like Chinese dishes and the Japanese dishes. Like, one of the items we'll be giving away free on Monday is the kimbo, the kimbo, which is like a sushi, like a sushi roll. So if you're familiar with that, you'll definitely enjoy that dish. Then we've got some Chinese-influenced dishes. I think everybody in America's heard of general salad chicken. We'll be carrying that, that seems to be a very popular dish.
Especially with the college students you'll be getting, yeah?
Yes.
Kimbo and Korean dumpling.
Oh, and the dumplings, that's another, another, another big item. We'll be giving those away for free on Monday, too, so that'll be a nice opportunity for the public to be exposed to, you know, Korean dishes that they may not otherwise have been in the past.
But did they have to do, you couldn't hook into any gas there, right? Or could, did you have?
Oh, yeah.
How did that work for you?
That's been somewhat of a delay, but we've overcome that. Dennis and Tim are going to be coming out tomorrow, tentatively, hopefully that'll go through, because if you're familiar with Johnny, he had a death in the family, so that's, and he's been coordinating that entire operation, but he's been, he sent me a message today, and I'm like, Johnny, just, you know.
Are you all set, the fire chief also?
Yes, the fire chief's on board, so we're going to, there's going to be a big party over there with the propane turn-on, and once the gas is on, we're halfway there.
You're all set?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay.
And we're excited.
As long as we have all of our permits in place, I don't see a problem, so does anybody else have any questions or interest in a motion? David, do you, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's perfectly fine, it just needs to come and make another license, which is issued by the Select Board, that's the only thing. You take your vote tonight, it'll have it prepared for us, your signature at your next meeting, which is tomorrow.
I'll make a motion to approve the compact.
I'll second.
All right. Another discussion?
Looking forward to seeing you.
All in favor? Aye, aye, yeah, that's great, welcome to Hadley. Glad to have you.
We're excited to be here.
Good, we're glad to have you also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Thanks.
You'll see David or Jennifer on Friday?
On Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, I spoke with Jennifer at length today, she kind of told me the whole, the whole program, so I'll be speaking to her probably tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.
You, too.
Super, other business? All right, back to the top. Got time, David, you want to start with your report, anything particular today?
So Marlo and I are watching the skies with respect to MS4, two months left in the, in the stay of implementation issued by the EPA. We have heard nothing from the federal government or the state government as to whether they're going to extend the stay or if they're going to go full implementation from July 1st. We are well-positioned to file the notice of intent, which is the first regulatory hurdle that we need to clear. That's due in September, mid-September. Basically, that's done, so we've been using this time to just catch up on all the things that we should be doing anyways, so we're in good shape there. Route 9 pedestrian crossing improvements, it's nearing completion. I believe they have another couple days left on construction, and then they're going to get the equipment up as soon as it arrives.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Because I've had a couple of questions from the public, and they wanted to know what was going on, and where the sidewalk was being moved to, or the crossing was being...
The new crosswalk basically lands somewhere between the two old crosswalks.
Right.
Cumberland to Cross to the courthouse, I believe.
So the question I was struggling to answer was, okay, so if that's where they're moving it to, how is that safer than the two that are there?
They're claiming, well, the one that was closest to the sharp curve, I think, was the biggest issue.
Clearly that one, yeah.
And they, they're saying moving it to where they did was the only place they could position it with other utilities in the ground, would get far enough away from the sharp corner in order for traffic to see the proper lighting coming around the corner, have enough time to stop.
I think a lot of people are still worried about people, unfortunately tend to pick up speed on the bent nut. So are they going to have signage in advance of that, or?
I think signage was mentioned, crosswalk, something or other ahead in the initial meeting back last July, I think it was, this was first thing we talked about.
I'm wondering if we should ask the police department, you know, the sign boards, if that maybe when...
I think they ought to sit there for a few nights, because there's certainly, the 40 miles an hour goes down when you hit the center of the town.
Oh, yeah.
And I think, you know, napping some people as they come around the corner is a, is a great thing, not to get just shut out there.
He's the man, he's our man, that's definitely the officer you want.
Not holding a radar gun, I would say speed's definitely an issue on that corner.
It is an issue on the corner coming around there.
But also, you know, maybe even new crosswalk or something on that sign board, because I mean, I could, I could do every day and so...
I personally don't like people using the center of Route 9. They should be at the crosswalk here where you push a button. It certainly is much more safer. I need to encourage people, if you even have to walk that little bit of difference, it certainly makes a difference on your life, you know, trying to cross there and be safe, because it's not.
But we understand it's not, this isn't a town, this is a DOT.
But to address that, this HOCH system, I don't think there's many, if any, in New England, or near New England, if I remember correctly, a lot of them down south.
Yeah, Midwest.
But it's, it's halls with light bars, I mean, this thing's supposed to stand out like a Christmas tree, and you're supposed to understand it. So again, you come around the corner, you see this big U shape with the lights and telling you what to do and not to do.
Hold that thought.
Yeah.
I am repeating the verbiage, I heard last July.
Well, because we have to walk it on one side and we got that, you know, the hammer stone the other, so.
It might be worthwhile to send around to the Select Board the presentation that MS DOT did on the HOCH crosswalk, the high-intensity signs and the illumination, so.
You could, you could put that on YouTube and let people watch it, we don't need any...
Apparently it is on YouTube already.
Well, good, tell them, let's tell them to watch it on YouTube, do what the crosswalk is all about, right?
I just wanted to bring it up to see if we could engage our public safety department in that regard, once it's a go-live.
I'm going to be frank, for myself, but go ahead.
Moving right along, yeah, the long list of things that we're doing these days, the emergency repair to the sore line, South Maple Street on Route 9 is drawing a lot out. Marlo, you probably have a much more in-depth presentation to do, but we did secure the emergency procurement relief from D-CAM, got an emergency waiver from them, we contacted Department of Revenue for emergency expenditure authorization. Marlo has put together a funding plan for funding this entirely through his sewer operational budget, with assistance from the $10,000 reserve and the sewer enterprise fund, so we'll be asking you to make a transfer of $10,000 from sewer reserve to the sewer operations in order to support this project. The amount of the base bid is $72,326. You're already doing the work at this point, we've proceeded with an emergency...
Final budget's around $85,000 total, with the lease detail, subdich vehicles, and whatnot, so.
So we should manage to finish most of this, it'd be out of the University of Massachusetts graduation date of May 11th.
And 12.
I think you may have some updates.
11th and 12.
11th and 12, yeah.
If you may, I can get that out of the way now, it's further on the agenda, but it's going to take a lot to...
What's that?
We completed 800 feet last night, we're doing 1,000 feet tonight. We will be out of that area and potentially next week, or the following week, they'll be coming back to the E Street intersection. So once we get through tonight, the last 1,000 feet at 12-inch, we can all breathe it easier, we'll be fine for graduation. The company moved some things around, understood our problems, and they saw the film, so they moved some less emergency work from other communities around, and they were able to come in and do ours, I know that they were a little, well, well, busy, so.
Great. Nice.
That's where we're at.
Thank you, it's a hard work.
So it goes to the sewer department, Dave, they're working some long hours and assisting the project, it's not just the company doing it.
They love it.
They love it, yeah. Is your, your whole sewer team working on it?
Yes.
Good.
I think they're going to swap out tonight, I got one additional from Highway rotating out. We're going to have to put a third subdich truck on tonight, we got a lot more flow on the section we're doing tonight to bypass the sewer.
It's a bigger, bigger...
Yeah, we're taking the mall side tonight in the hotels, even though we put letters out, you know, everyone to please limit the water the best you can, but we're taking on probably three times as much flow, and both trucks kept up without even skipping a beat last night, but I got three trucks on tonight.
And it's probably better now in the middle of the week than towards the end of the week when they have more people in the hotels, too?
And my fear of doing it next week was, we must have people filling the hotels throughout the week, before the weekend graduation, so I'm sure that our, the flows were the big thing, it wasn't so much the traffic, it was the flows we were going to see in the sewers, so, to get this done, so.
Okay.
Sounds like we'll be pretty good until we get to the E Street, but...
Yes.
So the money came out of your sewer operating budget, so David, when do we need to do something to replace that money, because that was supposed to be used for other things, I assume, until the end of the fiscal year?
Well, I think, I think once the project is done and we look at the rest of the work that needs to happen, we have emergency authorizations from the Department of Revenue to deficit spend, but we would have to fix that at the small, fall-time meeting. We want to avoid that if we can.
Avoid the deficit spending.
Avoid the deficit spending, but once we have all the pieces together, we'll come back and say, okay, we think we can make it to the end of the fiscal year, or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can just slide by, depends if something else comes up, putting off a few of the more expensive maintenance items that we normally do this time of year. And again, kick it forward to fall town meeting, using the capital impact fee funds to put back up in the reserves would be my recommendation, because if we don't want to throw the whole bottle we're going to talk about in the rate then, but we can talk about that further later, let's, let's get to it.
Yeah.
So the Commonwealth Compact IT grant, that part of the upgrade of the sewer pump stations with the supervisory control and data acquisition type system, which we're now going to call the Mission System, I guess that's a brand name.
It's a form of SCADA, yes.
Okay, that now is substantially complete, and we had a sunset provision on that grant money on June 30th, so we successfully managed that, applied for and managed that grant and brought the project up and running. So now, all pump stations are, are connected to your cell phone.
There, all our pump stations and wastewater treatment plant are now cellular, cell U-turn. We can now cancel the existing phone lines to eight stations, eight, eight of the stations, about 450 on the one side, everything goes iPads and phones now, so.
Nice.
The Town Hall Fire Alarm System and the DPW Fire Alarm System, we just have some late information on that, we've identified low bidders that are below the procurement threshold for public works and public construction. So we're now in a position where we have a budget, we have vendors, and we'll start developing the contracts, and getting that work done, so that we can get fire safety alarms in these critical buildings. Been bugging the people that are doing our levee subsurface survey, they gave me a verbal report over the telephone some weeks ago, they should have given us the written report, and they owe you a presentation, so I'm going to get aggressive with them.
David, just go back, that direct local technical assistance grant, it looks like there was a change there, what is that about?
All right, so the DLTA grant, this is something that we partnered with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for regional procurement of accounting services. We have an accounting services provided by A-State Municipal Accounting, we have a one-off relationship with them, a one-to-one relationship with them. We can renew with them, or we can look at what the benefits of a regional approach may, may involve, so we'll be evaluating those bids tomorrow morning. We sent out eight invitations for proposals, we only received one back, and I haven't had a chance to take a look at it, I just received it this afternoon.
And that's accounting, like a town accountant, or?
Town accounting.
Okay, is it an auditing type of service, or town accounting services, basically?
Accounting services.
Okay, okay.
We went out to bid for an audit firm, and Melanson &amp; Heath was a successful bidder, and we have them for the next three years. Just as a side note, there are certain exemptions from pyramid accounting and auditing services are exempt, but we go out to bid anyways, best management practice. Town meeting, we have a town meeting coming up, and we'll be talking about that in a moment. Ambulance RFP, so we're getting the contracts ready for you to take a look at, target date of May 16th, your next meeting.
I just have a question on that, too. I was just worried about the wording you had here, that we awarded the three-year ambulance contract to Action.
Technically, technically what you did is you were interested in looking at the ambulance service through Action, conditional upon a successful contract.
Yeah, 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 we agreed to go into contract negotiations with them.
Yeah.
Is not a good time to talk about any of that ambulance issue? No, okay.
Well, you're going to burn up some time until 8 o'clock for a follow-up hearing.
Yeah, that's absolutely...
Let's move on, you have other things to do, we don't need to rehash the ambulance at this point.
All right, so the department heads met today, and we started talking about the closeout for fiscal year 2018. I'll be asking the board to take action. There are certain deadlines that I want everybody to be adhering to with respect to reimbursable grants, Chapter 90 reimbursables, deadline for invoices, encumbrances, payroll, all those things that need to be thought about at the department level. We also talked about line-to-line transfers, where you're allowed to transfer money from one line to a next, if you have deficit in one line and surplus in another, you can do that, but it involves Select Board and Finance Committee approval for that action, and that can only occur in the last two months of a fiscal year. And also, reserve fund transfers, and I'm asking the departments to have all of those line-to-line transfers, Gabriel, all the line-to-line transfers and all the reserve fund transfers to be prepared by no later than June 20th, which is the last Select Board meeting, probably the last Finance Committee meeting of the fiscal year.
Gotcha.
I also, we did a free cash certification schedule, I updated it to match the 2018 calendar, I have that on your agenda for next time you meet, just to take a look at it and make sure that this works for everybody, and I'll be asking the board to sign off on that, so that we have buy-in from all the departments. We want to get away from the problem that we had last year, of free cash being certified very, very late, and basically, we're going into town meeting, we look blind, because we didn't know what the number was until too late, not too late, but just in the nick of time. We want to avoid that, we want to know what that number is by mid-September, so certain things have to happen at that.
As long as the state comes up with it, then we, then we get to know, but, you know, our hands are tied until then.
But we need to hit deadlines, we're going to give them sufficient time, and that's what didn't happen, yeah.
Right.
And the financial management team will be meeting shortly to evaluate the accounting proposals under the DLTA regional grant, and we'll also be working on some of the projects that the Department of Revenue recommended back in 2017 for our best management program. And one of the simplest things that we can work on, and is probably the most useful, is to compile a unified financial policy manual for the town of Hadley. We have lots and lots of financial policies, but they're spread out all over the place, different offices, and I sort of know where, what they all are, but it's not written down in one place, so that's something that, that team could work well on.
Can I ask a quick question, just on that? I'm asking that chair over there, excuse me.
Right, speak up.
And it dawned on me when I was looking at David's report, I've been the Select Board representative on the financial management team, is it, can I continue to do some?
Sure.
So could you just make sure I get...
Yep. When the financial management team meets, I'll certainly let everybody know, so that you know that it's happening. Mother's Club Recycling Day, April 28th, annual town meeting coming up.
Yes, the 28th, it was a town meeting success.
Oh, yeah, 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 look at that.
Mayday, mayday.
How time flies, look at that. All right, so town meeting tomorrow night, 7:00, Hopkins Academy and Gymnasium, and then the Asperger's Festival coming up on June 2nd.
One question. Certainly. On the levee and common repairs from the postal incident and the other incident, where are we with that? Because this is the time to be planting grass and doing all that kind of stuff.
So you've been working with the post office?
How's that working?
Well, there was an issue, apparently, when, when they cut the check, it said that we, we have a contractor, we call the price, they cut a check somehow, they have to, they have to recut us a check, and we get the return soon, I can make a phone call tomorrow. The levee, I think, Dave, is still dealing with...
Been working with the insurance company of the perpetrator, who, who didn't report it to his insurance company, so they had to learn about it for me, so we'll, we'll get everything worked out.
Okay.
The postal perp.
Sweet. I don't see anybody here from the senior center or the library building committees, so.
Oh, I could mention something on the senior center.
That'd be good.
Uh, did we, did you contact the planning board chair about those meetings, May 15th and June?
Oh, yes, in terms of moving the little bigger venue.
Moving it to Hopkins, yeah.
Yes, I did, and I got the answer back that the 15th, they didn't want to move the venue, because it's just a submittal, but for the June 13th?
Hasn't?
June 12th.
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 June 12th, yes, they wanted, they want our assistance in scheduling a large room for that.
Okay.
So we're working with the schools on that one.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, since Christian's on the 20? One of the, well, I think this is maybe more messaging, one of the things that we talked about at the joint building committee meeting that David and I sit on between the library and the, and the senior community center, is making sure that we have very clear talking points for town meeting, because I'm sure a question that will come up repeatedly is, can't you just move it?
Yeah.
And talked about that a couple of times, and I've really yet to see just bullet points on that, and I think it would be really helpful.
I think Suzanne has some of that information. I know that she did give me that, to move it west would cost at least $540,000.
I, I got the price tag.
But I don't know, yeah.
So could, would you mind maybe getting that message back to, I mean, this isn't new, this is something that we've asked for a lot.
Okay.
And that seems to be the biggest question.
Yeah, details are good to answer those questions.
Right, because, you know, again, ultimately, as I've been reminded repeatedly, it's all true, it's, it's the Select Board's building project, so I'm really feeling, feeling a little uncomfortable with, you know, I, I know enough, but I, I think the folks that have been on the building committee, meeting directly with the OPM, I'd really like to hear that.
And that's kind of, that's, I think that's kind of hard to pinpoint, yes, the Select Board is in charge of the buildings, but we certainly...
But you're not there for the nitty-gritty details of those building meetings.
No, but we, we, we weren't, we weren't there in the beginning, we were kind of, I thought in the beginning, blindsided, because we didn't know that these projects were taking place and being underway, even with the library and then the senior center jumping on it. They kind of just snowballed and rolled into their own committees at that point, and then they came to us, and that's how we, all of a sudden, it's ours, and, you know, I think we were a little bit blindsided by that, to actually say that it's our building project... You know, I think we were a little bit blindsided by that to actually say that it's our building project at this point because, I mean, it is.
Our purview, and I think, I mean, it is, it's under our purview.
Because it's a building, it's going to be a town building, I understand that, sure.
Yeah, like I said, I just, you know, I just want to make sure we, as a select board, have as much clarity.
And then we didn't even know at the same point that they were going to go for a bigger building.
No, I'm fast-forwarding past that to, from that till now.
Yeah, yeah. Where we are now, yeah.
Certainly, we have representation on the committee, you know, and we continue to have representation, so, so, sorry, I know you're joking.
Yeah, throw me into the fire here, that's my day.
Yeah, it's not the pants.
Just a small homework assignment, Christian has that.
Alright, how about the library?
So, before we leave the venue, senior center, there is an issue that comes, that's coming up from the OPM. And the OPM is asking me, and I think it's entirely appropriate that I share this with the board, about how to review the ten proposals that were submitted. And in your board docs tonight, you'll see that there are, there's a list of submissions, ten of them. Under the terms of the RFQ that went out, and let me just back up a little bit to say that the purpose of this RFQ is to develop a stable of pre-qualified contractors who will then receive a bid package. And other people would be ineligible to apply because they've not gone through the pre-qualification process. In our RFQ, one of the requirements was to have two years of audited financial statements for their company. Only four of the companies or, yeah, only four of the companies meet that criteria. And the owner's project manager is concerned that our stable of pre-qualified general contractors is too small. And that we want to widen this up as much as possible. And so, he's asked me, would we review, would we accept what is called reviewed financial statements? And Molly, when you were chair, you and I talked about this, and we both agree that that was inappropriate. There are too many horror stories of other towns out there embarking on a major building project only to find their general contractor has gone bankrupt. And there's one town out there that has to do weekly invoices because the cash flow is so poor. That's the only way to keep the project moving forward. So, there are horror stories out there, we don't want to have a relaxed standard on the, on the on the financial strength of the company that we're going to engage or the project itself. So, number of conversations back and forth, I stood my ground on the audited versus reviewed statements. It's resulted in these four being qualified under those.
The ones in red, I'm assuming.
The ones in red.
So, wouldn't enough bonding take care of that problem with them not being able to finish the project or not being able to carry out their contractual needs? I'm just looking at the list here, and there's some names that are pretty significant in this area, yeah, and, you know.
I was too.
Yeah, so, can we look at it from a bonding angle to see if there's a way we can kind of compensate for that financial risk?
Well, I looked at it a couple of different ways. First of all, for anybody involved in a building project of this magnitude, they'd have to be certified by the state through the division of capital assets and management and maintenance, so they'd be decant certified. So, that's a form of pre-qualification, but it turns out that their financial pre- review is not as rigorous as ours. We could, we could look at the bonding, bond companies are notoriously difficult to work with when you have a claim. They'll ask for every document, public record.
Do you have experience with that?
Yes, we have.
And I agree with David, if there was something that we could do.
I just hate to exclude some of these companies here that have a great reputation as far as performance.
So, there's three options that we, the OPM and I have sort of developed. There are more options than this, but they're crummy options. Three relatively sane options are, one, extend our review time to give the companies that are not meeting the requirement time to get their books audited. So, that would be thirty or sixty days, we could extend the time by which we would be reviewing these. So, that would give you an extra candidate or two, that's one option.
That would be very difficult to do.
Would they be even willing to do that?
Try to get an audit done in sixty days for?
Yeah, trying to get an auditor scheduled in, in that timeframe is going to be extremely difficult for them, so. So, what's your?
So, statutes of regulations regarding review of contractors allows us to use our judgment so we can, we can relax our standards, basically, the judgment and the review process, so that's another option. And then the other option is to cancel the pre-qualification requirement altogether, just goes straight to bid and let anybody who would be decant certified.
I think so. When David and I had the conversation, you know, it was irrespective of, and this hadn't even, it was just a question, it was an issue. And I was telling David, I actually used to, my specialty was actually auditing real estate and construction years ago. And it's a tough business and the cash flow and the inventory and all of that stuff, I mean, it can be, you know, dealing with percentage complete on projects, I mean, you're constantly rolling one project into another. You can get in trouble pretty quickly, and we've all seen probably just smaller home contractors do it. So, there is an awful lot of financial risk in these companies and, but I certainly agree with you. I was surprised when I pulled this up, and I'm like, wow, I mean, I would have thought for sure some of these highly reputable companies would have audited financial statements. So, what I'm wondering is, given the fact that they don't, maybe we could somehow put the burden on them to say, you know, if in fact for cost reasons or whatever, that you haven't chosen to invest in, in audit. Somehow, we need to be comfortable that they're going concern. Because we've also had some local reputable contractors have gone out of business within the past ten years.
Right. I guess, from personal experience, this, I don't know if this works for the state. Could we change the pre-qualification to be that not having audited financials would not be disqualifying, but could be, I guess, bonus points, bonus points on their bid? So, that way, we can, you know, take that into account, if there's two companies that were fairly similar, the one with obviously the audited financials, and maybe that would encourage them to possibly work on an audit before the award is made.
Yeah, so that's one of the options, so we could do it that way.
And obviously encourage them to have the audited financials.
Fourth option, which I didn't say, which is we just stay with the four, and that's your stable of pre-qualified contractors.
That's tough, I mean.
Yeah, I see.
Connecticut Adams.
Maybe two, two out of the four that I've even heard of, so.
I've heard of none of them.
Yeah.
And we've done some building projects in town that have had people bid on projects, you know, between the school and the safety complex.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
These names aren't even familiar to me at all.
The burden has to be on them to give us some level of comfort. And, you know, again, quite frankly, I'm a little bit uncomfortable having us be evaluating that, but.
You know who I respect on this is David Tootren, since he does a lot of building, construction, an architect that he is. Just to maybe get his input on this, just to see what he has to say. Do you want me to reach out to him or?
Across the hall.
Is he?
Yeah. Well, they're in a meeting.
Yeah, they're in a meeting.
Oh. Building meeting? Yeah. Remember they were meeting tonight, and they knew that we wanted to come on. See what you saw.
What's our deadline for this?
Well, it depends on tomorrow's vote, but.
I mean, this is, this is their purview of the senior center.
We should be, we should be bidding this out in the next, um, forty-five days.
May twentieth was the deadline for getting candidate eligibility to bid? Just like this?
Okay, so, May twentieth, we would have had to narrow this list down to eligible contractors.
Yeah, to leave. I think they're still working on updating their schedule exactly at the senior center.
Hey, David.
Good afternoon.
Sorry to drag you out of the meeting.
No, that's fine.
She did it, just so you know.
I respect your expertise in this area.
No problem.
We have sent out an RFQ for the senior center. People, and one of the recommendations was to have them have two years of audit.
Financial statements, audited financial statements.
Okay, it's reasonable.
So, the people that have submitted, there was ten submitted, only four out of the ten have had two years of audit. Do you have had any?
Personally, I work for a much larger corporation where audited yearly and have been for the last twenty years, I know of, so. For smaller firms, maybe it's more of an impact to them, but it's very common in the construction industry.
To do that, to have construction companies to do that.
Would you mind looking at that list there from David's?
Oh, give you.
Give you an idea of who was not audited and who was?
Is there any indication of which ones were and which ones were not?
They're in red.
The ones in red are the ones that have audits.
Do you have that?
No, mine don't come up with that.
They're not red.
Here, David.
Those do have an audit or do not?
The ones in red, red have. Those four, you can see a couple of them are out of state.
So, there's some other DC.
So, sorry, again, the ones in red do not?
Do have it.
Do have it.
So, you can see there are a couple of more local.
I was actually surprised some of the, some of the other ones.
That's what we were just saying.
Number one and number six, I'm very surprised that either of those.
And there's a big difference between an audit and reviewed statements, so that's why.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, those are reputable companies, in my opinion, the ones that do, the ones that do not, so.
So, the thing that we're toying with, David, do you want to give him the scenarios and this is what your thoughts are on that?
So, there are four choices, one is we stand our ground, the four are the four, the pre-qualified GCs for that'll receive the bids for the senior center. Then we probably can have at least one of them say thanks but no thanks, so we're done, three. The other is to extend the time for review to give the other companies an opportunity to get their audits done, to qualify for the project. The other is to, mass regulations allow us to actually give a little bit of judgment in the way that we look at the submissions, so we could say that reviewed financial statements are not automatically disqualification, but they may rank you lower in certain regards. And then the final, the final option is to cancel the pre-qualification, just go straight to bid.
I'm curious how you came up with that requirement, was that based on historical RFQs that you've seen with similar project types? Who, I mean, who put that in and where was that from?
The owner, the owner's project manager was the one who put that in. But I agreed with the requirement, having heard horror stories in other towns.
Is that unusual to ask for two years of audit?
I'm not sure, George, honestly.
Because you do it yearly anyway.
You know, we're expected to be audited in my field, so that hasn't been a problem. But, but these are smaller firms, and I can see that it's harder for them to obtain that. But there's, there's some reputable firms there that do not have the audit, so I'd be a little cautious to tighten the rope a little too much, and then ultimately, you're going to get some higher prices because you're less competition. So, I'm not sure what to tell you to do at this point.
Do you feel that the audit is, David mentioned something about bonds, that sometimes they cover that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I would expect there to be a performance bond.
Yeah, there'd have to be a payment on performance bond.
And you have filed sub-bids here as well, right? So, you're going to have, beyond these contractors, you're going to have a list of subcontractors that provide initial services, so you sort of spread out the risk in that sense, right?
Yeah. See, I guess, you know, part of the concern is that, big difference between the review and the audit, you know, this idea of substantive testing versus, you know, asking questions. And with the construction companies, a huge issue is receivables because it's against project work, so these payments are coming in, and they're going out, they're sticking their neck out, they're making a commitment on the project. And if those receivables don't get collected, because I'm pretty darn sure, like, none of these guys are going to have, you know, they'll be flush with cash in their balance sheet, I mean, they're constantly.
Right, well, there's a schedule of values that you assign to the project at the beginning of the project, and generally, the mobilization number is something that's billable almost immediately to the, to the beginning of a project, which is where some of that occurs, so it doesn't give the contractors much risk upfront, and they can build a mobilization quickly.
Right, but from, from our standpoint, to the extent that they, some of the smaller firms mainly have a couple of projects going on at a time, and if they have significant receivables, you know, we're not going to, we can ask all the questions in the world.
Yeah.
It's different from an auditor going in, and I really, I hate, I would hate to disqualify them, but I think there needs to be some other level of diligence done on them because nor, nor can we afford to put the town at risk if they're having problems we don't know about.
Is it possible to make the requirements set such that they have an audit within the last two years or they have an audit in the last five years, would that still give you the comfort level as opposed to two audits in two years?
Well, it's like you said, it's pretty dynamic industry, so an audit five years ago is not as good, but what happened the last year? Sometimes, as a contractor, you work on a project that long, you actually might have only completed one project in five, well, not five years, but two. So, I mean, that is something I might recommend us thinking about. Did the OPM give you any kind of, I mean, certainly, they've got experience here, how do they take this? Is this a deal breaker for them, or they think that you should loosen up the requirements?
They're basically asking us to loosen up the requirements, and he's asked me to loosen them up to the point where I feel uncomfortable, but I think, yeah, but I think that's what we're talking about, the sense that I'm getting from the board is that using judgment in the requirements, which is allowed under mass general law, is the way that we're going to go here.
So, the only thing I would like to add then is just to make it clear that when these are evaluated, that there needs to be an added layer of financial scrutiny, whatever that winds up meaning. Maybe we talk directly with the accounting firm that did the review. But, you know, bank statements, they, you know.
Well, and the performance bond is really intended to mitigate your risk barriers, so that's very important. Make sure that's placed into the value that you think is appropriate for this. I wish I could be more helpful, it's just, it's a little bit different of a market than I play in, so.
Yeah, but you have a general idea of what, more so than when I have a general idea, but that's why I respect your input.
That's why I should still be at that meeting for this.
Yeah.
It's all corporate business.
Just for a minute, and you're involved with it anyway, I mean, this is part of a building that's going to be going up in Hadley, I mean.
I hope.
I hope, we'll see, won't we? But I appreciate that.
So, God knows what they've been doing in there without you, while you're gone, they probably voted all sorts of things, so.
They get way into, they get way off course. Only thing I do well is I string them all back in.
But at least I think it gives us a good option of what we could, we could ask for, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so that's, that's the message I'm bringing back to the OPM.
Thank you, David.
Thank you for asking.
You can share that with them, what we're toying with over here, so that's okay.
Your luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so, is there any pleasure of the board on what we would like to, you know, loosen the reins a little bit?
So, are you guys comfortable with that as far as audited financials not being a disqualifier, but giving it an additional positive weight to any bid that does have audited financials?
Yeah, I think that idea.
We can stress that to those contractors, that if there's a way to get those done quickly, or maybe they're already in process, then.
Or when was, or the other question is, when was the last time you did have an audit?
True.
Just like he said.
Yeah, were they audited?
You know, when were you last audited?
If ever.
You know.
That's what I was thinking, was the wording that we requested from them, and maybe there's something in that wording they didn't meet, but maybe they have something else that's.
Maybe that's what we should have asked to submit their last audit, and then we could tell by their date on their auditing how soon that was or how far back it was. Which would play a factor into how reputable they might be. Which would play a factor into how reputable they might be too.
Yeah, I mean typically if you see somebody go from an audit to a review, it's because their bank's no longer requiring it.
Right.
So, and if they're not having any issue getting, getting gigs, then they're like, I'm not going to pay the cost of an audit.
Yeah.
The other reason to go from an audit to a review.
Because there's an issue.
Can be different.
Yeah.
Alright, so I think that.
Do we need to make a motion, or do we?
Want to motion David on that?
Um, I have a suggestion of what the board wants, so if you'd like to take a motion, that's, that's fine.
It's up to you, if you'd like to do one, or just direct him to.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah.
To loosen.
Alright, we'll carry forward.
Okay. Alright, how about HCG Board of Counselors?
Yes, wanted to speak to that really quick.
Sure.
So I wanted to mention, I know that it's on the agenda for the sixteenth to actually reappoint a counselor. I wanted to say that I won't be seeking reappointment for this year, mostly because I'll be leaving in the fall, so it'll only be for a short couple of months anyway.
So where are you going?
Northwestern Kellogg.
Nice.
Business School.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Chicago? Yeah.
I was just there? Not Kellogg, I was in Chicago.
Yeah, we just visited, fantastic place.
Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, so I thought it'd be a great opportunity for perhaps one of your select board members, or somebody else who was looking to get involved, for me to get them up to speed before the sixteenth, if you're interested, so you know what you're getting into, before the select board decides to appoint somebody. In the meantime, any meetings that are still going on at the HCG, I'll be attending to keep informed, not in any voting capacity, or just, you know, represent how those interests. And, yeah, lots been going on, so any questions for me now, or after we get through town meeting? Might be more appropriate.
Probably after town meeting, we've got, I think some voting to do on, well, not on that too, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously been a fair amount of, a recent round of, of press, so yeah, I think we'd like to hear the inside, a little bit more of the inside story on.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to them whenever, just if you want to go after town meeting, makes sense.
After town meeting, you guys go to that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
So, will we be appointing anybody tonight to that position?
No, but you should announce that the position is open and you'll be taking letters of interest from Hadley residents.
So, woo, so there is a position open for counselor to the HCG Board of Counselors for a one-year appointment until the next annual town election, due to the write-in winner declined the position. So we are asking if there are any interested community members that would like to fill that vacancy for the time being for a year and represent us at the, at the CAG. We did vote to withdraw from the CAG this year, which probably will just be until next year anyway, that we would.
Two thousand and nineteen is the end of our.
Twenty nineteen, so this would be a short stint for somebody to do if they would like to. Okay, not yet for public hearing, but we already heard about the sewer line emergency procurement, we didn't have anything else on that, right? You're all set with that from telling us what you did?
Yes, we're all set for now.
Okay.
I'll keep you updated on the finishing of the fourteen inch, I'll get a solid date on it after tonight.
Anybody want to do a song and a dance here, let's see, FY ninety budget closeout.
David already did that, didn't he?
No, actually I need you to take a look. So here are the deadlines I gave to the departments and the procedures for revenues for last warrant for the enclosures, line-to-line transfers and reserve fund transfers. The select board, I'm asking for them to declare the last warrant of FY eighteen to be July twentieth. If you could take a motion, that would be great.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommended dates as presented for the final, final warrant and submission of invoices.
I'll second it.
Okay, and would you like further discussion? No, we're all set, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, so we've got a few minutes. Let's do anything, any update on the annual town meeting warrant, I think we've just about hashed this to death until tomorrow, so anybody else want something?
Do we have everything we need from the town council as far as a response to our questions and still waiting?
No, you're going to be meeting with him tomorrow at five thirty, and I was hoping to get a bunch of information by email, and I haven't received anything.
Eleven o'clock hour.
Eleven o'clock hour.
Everybody bringing a pen?
Supposedly we're meeting for, at five thirty, I will be here as soon as possible, four or six at the latest, but I should be here before then, so, which I think gives us plenty of time, we usually do meet ahead of town meeting to see if there's anything else going on, and I think basically we're looking for some answers from the attorney, so I don't see us recashing any other articles, actually before town meeting.
If there's anything that anybody needs, please.
Well, we didn't have, we, do you have any numbers for us tonight, maybe?
Uh, yes, I don't have them here, but.
Okay.
I will.
When are you going to share with, is that tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll plug in those numbers and share them around.
Okay.
So the finance committee did have to.
So we could recash stabilization, sewer reserves.
Any, any of that too?
Yeah, that.
That one page that's blank?
Yeah, yeah, that one, I was looking to see if it was in here.
Numbers tomorrow night?
Yeah, we'll prepare a scorecard for you so that.
Is that changed with the sewer reserves because of the project that's going on right now, yes?
No, that's a different fiscal year.
Different fiscal year, okay.
So I'll have like a scorecard for you, so you can go through the financial articles, you'll find out how much is the appropriation, then which pots of money has been applied to meet that appropriation, so that you have a running tally of how things are going, which is useful to expand at any special town meetings, so you have like a complete fiscal year understanding of what town meeting actions were.
And I don't mean to put, put myself in a position to potentially be eating crow after the next town meeting, but just in the past, one of the worst things that can happen at a town meeting is finding out that the numbers aren't quite right, because you, you can't, you, you have to fix them like right there, so there've been, thank, thankfully, a very small number of meetings in the course of history where something went astray and all of a sudden everybody's up there with, you know, Brian West takes his pencil off his ear and he's making changes and finance committee, so that's why this is important, trying not to, because once it's voted, it's, that, that's it.
We used to have a finance committee member years ago would be up on the stage with his, those.
Big old shit.
Yeah, the machines up there going at it, seeing, making all the numbers go, he was gray. He was married to a Kuchinsky. Oh, it'll come to me, I'll blurt it out, one of these.
I have a couple of announcements related to town meeting, you want me to do those now?
That would be great, sure, I'd like to do announcements.
I'm sensing this until we come through.
Okay.
Okay, so there are two things I have been asked to announce. First thing is Hadley Park and Rec, thank you very much, is sponsoring Kids Drop-In Night. This is for children ages five through twelve, and this is being held in the Hopkins Academy Cafe, specifically to allow parents who want to attend town meeting the opportunity to do so. So the Kids Drop-In Night is being held from six PM to nine PM, again, that's Thursday tomorrow, May third, at Hopkins Academy Cafe, and donations will be accepted at the door. So they'll be providing snacks, games, Mother's Day projects, arts and crafts, so that you can go to town meeting and let your voice be heard, so again, big shout out and thank you to the Hadley Park and Rec. The other announcement I was asked to make is that Hadley Media is planning on conducting a survey. What they're hoping to do is have a table at town meeting, and they're, they're in the process of clearing this with the town moderator, so it may be physically in the town meeting space, if he says no, then it will be outside the hallway probably. But they want to do a survey in the spirit of continuous improvement to find out what's working for folks, what's not working, how often people are watching Hadley Media, make sure they're aware that they can go to hadleymedia.org to see live streams as well as tapes of many, if not most of our, our public meetings, so if you have a chance, please stop by the Hadley Media table tomorrow night when you're at town meeting.
I got one.
It's here.
Alright, um, May twenty-fourth, the Friends of Hadley Preschool Silent Option is at the elementary school at six thirty PM, and we've got a ton of stuff from local businesses, hotel stays from local hotels, and all kinds of stuff from Estelon and Dunkin' Donuts, you name it. And that's to raise money for their operating expenses for preschool, since that's not part of the school budget all the time, so.
Nice, nice. Six, six o'clock?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Elementary school.
Christian, do you have any?
I have nothing, Molly stole my thunder.
It said Molly, please not.
Wow, we're coming down to the wire, are we eight o'clock yet, John?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, eight o'clock it is, we will have.
Oh, sorry, just one more thing.
Okay.
Regarding town meeting, sorry.
Yes.
There was a question at the forum about the last vote for the clerk and treasurer.
Yeah.
Did you get those numbers?
Yes.
You did, okay.
I have it in an email from Jessica.
Okay.
She had it used on.
There were two, two tries at that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Dating back many, many years.
Yeah.
I was actually surprised how long ago the earliest ones have been.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so notice is hereby given that the select board of the town of Hadley, acting as the water commissioners and sewer commissioners, will hold a public hearing on changing water and sewer rates and charges on Wednesday, May second, two thousand and eighteen, at eight PM in room two oh three of Town Hall. And the public is invited to attend, and we are now opening the public hearing on the water sewer rates. Marlo?
Well, as we all know, I, I met with the board twice to present alternate A, and then we went to an alternate B on the water sewer rates, as it relates to our, our capital improvement plan, as well as operational. In last meeting, we, we landed at a, a five percent increase in water and a fifteen percent increase in sewer, in which we scheduled the public hearing for tonight. I went back through the numbers one more time, made sure we were okay, so here we are.
Because I'm not get, I haven't gotten into, do you actually have, just so we can reiterate to the public how much that would cost people?
I could do a quick analysis too, I did it on my water bill, because some of you just got them the other day.
Okay.
You know, actually, yeah, basically, you know, my water bill, my sewer bill goes up by forty-nine dollars per year from what it is right now, about twelve dollars and fourteen cents per quarter. My water bill will go up by about thirteen, you know, fourteen dollars per year, so, you know, water, I don't think that's a big impact, but sewer is a big impact.
Do you use a lot of water in your business, or is that?
My business, if we look at that, we're rated at a slightly different rate, it could go up by between five hundred and a thousand dollars per year, depending on how much we're using, and that's sewer, and so, and water will go up around, you know, three hun, a hundred fifty to three hundred per year for the business, so it's significantly more, you know, but, but that's what it is, just looking at the numbers.
Do you have any other numbers, or is that basically about right?
So it's five percent and fifteen percent?
Correct, yeah.
So five percent for water and fifteen percent for sewer?
I did do up a quick chart of per hundred cubic feet, what it would be like if it's five dollars and six cents for say residential sewer, five dollars and six cents per hundred cubic feet. But I did, I did a quick chart on that, in case we needed it.
The average household bill?
Residential, let's see that, residential sewer FY nineteen would be five eighty-two per, per five dollars and eighty-two cents per hundred cubic feet. From five oh six.
Is there any way to, I guess, make the curve a little less steep as far as the increases in the sewer rates? So you've got five percent for water for FY nineteen, which, you know, I guess is reasonable. But as far as the fifteen percent for the next three years, each year in sewer rates, is there any way to kind of spread that out over, over the years a little bit?
Well, we look at that and where we were falling with our reserves being, being brought into, to a level of the, the operating budget. FY nineteen was, was the, I think I spoke in, we spoke in the first meeting, the first presentation. This, this year the fifteen percent, next year fifteen percent, and moving capital further out and bringing some capital numbers down, basically gives us our operational budget. So, the answer's not no, further down the road, but this year is really important, with that number, extremely important.
We're facing a situation, particularly in sewer, where we're going to be insolvent, and we would have to
Yeah.
inject non-sewer money into the investment, if we don't take some steps right now.
So I think the vote that we're taking tonight is just for this year, correct?
Yes, yes, I mean this model, yeah.
So we'll have another bite at it.
This model is for, for me to keep and to adjust my capital, adjust my numbers from year to year, and come back to the board. Now, bear in mind, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we have nine hundred and forty-six users in sewer as opposed to two thousand something customers in water, maybe it's more than that, I forget the exact number. So that's why you got the five percent, fifteen percent, and that's why the curve is going down so quickly with sewer, with the capital improvement and the projects we've done and the upcoming projects, so that's.
Is this, is the sewer rates, the fifteen percent, I mean, that would be across the board, I assume?
Yes.
So is there any way to, I guess, divide that up, I mean, obviously you've got some, some heavier users out there, I just want to make sure that, you know, fifteen percent could be a big deal to a residential customer, or to an agricultural customer versus maybe a car wash or whatever, that that's, you know.
Right, well, the agricultural, you have ag meters and everything's driven by the water use, your sewer, your sewer rates are driven by your water. So agricultural, as far as the farming community, they have separate meters, they're only charged for the water, it doesn't charge the sewer. They have ag meters, so they don't pay the sewer on that, that large consumption of water.
Yeah, I was just scared by the numbers too, you know, just projecting out, I know we're just voting this year, but, you know, it could double in the next five years, that, those sewer fees, I mean, water would go up by one point, you know, a hundred forty percent, or by forty percent over the next five years, but yeah, the sewer seems hot, you know, it does seem hot.
I can remember years ago when I first, you know, I can talk about many years ago. But the thing back then was, is that the plan was to have the whole town of Hadley on sewer, which never came to fruition. But they did talk about that many years ago, and it just never happened, and I don't think actually that our sewer plant at this point could even take the whole town being sewer.
Yeah.
We have a fair amount of capacity though.
Uh, we, we've got pretty good capacity left, yes, we're, we're pretty steady at about sixty-eight percent the last three or four years, there's not, there isn't going to be an increase.
But the amount of lines and things that you'd have to run.
Well, you know.
Would certainly be a.
Not to get in the nuts and bolts, but Hadley's flat, it's flat land, you have nine pump stations, I mean, cities, some cities only have one or two. Nine pump stations, twenty-one miles of force main, for a community of five thousand nine hundred and forty-six acres is a, of infrastructure. And as we know, what the pipes are doing, they've aged, so. My opinion is only one other way to go, and that's, that's through, if we do capital through taxation, I mean, I'm not recommending it, but that's the other way to look at it, as, as it's the community sewer system.
Could that be decreased through impact fees at all, I mean, are, could, raising impact fees, could that offset some of the needed raises in the sewer?
Impact fees are pretty much right up there. I think the big thing is, is, it'd be fair to say that the, the large projects, the large commercial projects are, have slowed down. The impact fees haven't been as plentiful, I guess. You know, residential impact fee is, is fairly reasonable rate, real reasonable. It's when you get into the big commercial structures that, that your impact fees are a large fee.
We're not seeing that right now, we don't have Berkshire Gas, you know, allowing anybody to hook in for, you know, new restaurants or things like that, which would certainly offset that.
Did you ever have any conversation with the DPW director in Amherst?
Yes, last Friday.
Oh, you did?
I know, we go for last Friday.
Does this, does this conversation come up at all about sewer?
Yes, yes. You know, we've been so busy with everything that, you know, I was going to speak about it a little bit tonight, I had spoken to David. about it a little bit tonight, I had spoken to David a little bit, but, um, yes, the town Amherst was, uh, they were right in the middle of redoing their permit for their plant, and, um-
Which is in Hadley.
And the D P W director reached out to me, said there was an old plan at one point or another to, you know, send our sewer to, to Amherst. Would you like to talk about it, because I would have to include it in my plans to, to re-permit, re, and re-expand my plant, or re, rebuild the plant, whatever, redoing it, so, that was about the extent of the discussion, and I said, we're bringing it back to, to town administrator and the board, um, that we could have a discussion on that.
It'll be interesting to know how they got to build their sewer plant in Hadley.
I know, I know.
Well, you know, there's a, there's kind of a myth out there that you gotta run a six-mile pipeline all the way from our treatment plant to their treatment plant in order for that to happen, but, again, not to get into the crazy engineering of everything, but it's much simpler than that, than what was first thought. Um, it was a beginning conversation, we talked about many things, we talked about not one of Wells.
And, and I was only aware of it, obviously, because at one point Gilford was on, and we had a fascinating discussion about this one morning over coffee, and I'm like, all right, you know, I didn't really understand, I'm like, okay.
Um, he's had a crazy schedule, I've had a crazy schedule, it like took three weeks, all right, we're doing this Friday morning at nine o'clock, and that's it, but-
Well, well, I think to David's point, and, and this came up when Ty and Bond was in here, when you're dealing with expensive infrastructure, pretty much the only way to deal with it is either to determine that you no longer need it and you abandon it, or you expand the number of people paying for it. I mean, it's, you have to scale the thing. And, you know, I don't know enough about the stuff, but I, I, to, to David's point about the cost increases, I mean, I think I, I can certainly get my head wrapped around fifteen percent this coming year, but, we also wrapped this into the conversation when some folks were talking about override, you know, that there's only so much that our taxpayers can absorb.
Right.
And I, you know, would be more than happy, again, to clarify what your, your goals and objectives that you're gonna bring to us for the coming year, but it seems to me that really digging in on the capital side of this whole sewer infrastructure in particular to see if there's any way to try to better manage or stave off some of these cost increases for our, for our users, um, I, it seems like behooves us to do that at this point, so.
Is there any way to monetize our excess capacity that we have, whether that's, I don't know, getting sewage from adjoining towns, letting some, you know, septicage be treated by us from adjoining towns, maybe we can undercut someone on price a little bit and get some business that way, so that we're actually using that capacity to make general revenue?
So, when, when I gave scenario B., I, I kinda moved the, the septic improvement out for our plant. Um, I don't wanna say it's a myth, but it's the only word I can come up with, it's a bit of a myth, what we make on septicage. If we take in fifteen cents, you know, fifteen cents a gallon, they bring in two thousand gallon load, sometimes you have to cut that, that, what you're getting revenues in half in order to stabilize the plant when they dump it in there. Chemicals, manpower, lab work. Septage upsets a small plant very easily, and so, Dennis does a very good job of monitoring that, but there's a certain amount of manpower in chemicals, it takes away from that revenue every time you dump a load in there. Uh, that's why I backed off on, hey, let's open it up to, uh, countywide and bring septic in, because we do have a small plant, it doesn't take much to upset it, and those numbers, you don't have to go off the D P W reports, so, um, yeah, it's an average of eighty thousand dollars a year, but really, at the end of the day, we're talking fifty thousand average that we're actually getting in revenue.
I just look at the, say, thirty percent excess capacity that we have, you know, we'll just say it's twenty, just in case for, you know, surges, but-
Yeah.
You know, good point, Molly, um, you know, we, we may wanna look at that a little harder with, with Amherst for the simple fact that-
Again, I have no way to presume what sort of, I don't even know what I'm talking about it, but I just, if it's an idea, then I think we should explore it.
But, you know, again, we just started the conversation, there, the other part of it is, you know, we gotta work out, they have certain ra, rates over there, and their system's different than ours, that they're taking hours. How do we adjust our rate schedule for, for our taxpayers?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a lot to be vetted out, again, we just started talking about it now.
Well, we certainly don't wanna go to them and increase it even more over here, and this is already getting to Amherst, so.
Yeah, that doesn't really, exactly.
That doesn't cut it, no.
Because, you know, when we went into the rate study that we did in-house last year, we compared to other communities, and, um, you know, again, Joyce and, and Molly, you've heard this before, but when I did the comparisons to surrounding towns and even larger towns or cities, their structure, their, their rate structure is broke differently, because sometimes they, they, they do their capital projects out of taxation.
Yeah.
Or their rate structure's just different. So, it's hard to get apples to apples when you say five oh six per hundred cubic feet, another community might be three oh six, but they do their capital differently from different areas of funding, so. We did the best we could with that, and again, we did it again this time around, and tried to find the best comparable. Um, and, and, I mean, certainly, it was something that I would like to, um, pursue or, or have further discussion with, with Amherst with, um, if it's okay with the board, um, at least to-
Sure.
-get more information and-
Yeah, well, for discussion soon.
My focus going forward is, is I think our plant's in pretty good shape, I think our pump stations are pretty, in pretty good shape.
Now, yeah.
There, there's, there's a few things in the pump stations we can peck away at with the operating budget that I have built in there that we should be doing a little bit each year.
Maybe.
But, I, I think, I think the, the, the true focus, as we all know now, should be the pipeline.
Well, the other thing I think we need, I'm sure the board's conscious of too, is the fact that, you know, when you look at our sewer personnel, two-thirds of the sewer department are, are fairly mature, experienced individuals, and they're not gonna be there forever.
Correct.
So, at some point, you know, in time, we're gonna experience some turnover too, and that, that is a part of our planning.
Those licenses are probably as thin as they've ever been in, in New England right now, too.
Really?
It's very hard to come by operators, extreme cover.
Okay, so, any motion, Christian?
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the recommendation of the D P W director, um, and for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year, um, increase water rates by five percent and sewer by fifteen, um, with a firm commitment on the part of the board to, um, dig in from a planning standpoint, particularly on the sewer side of the coming year.
I guess a second for discussion. I guess if we could split those, because for discussion's sake, I'd be supportive of the five percent raise in the water, but I, the fifteen percent raise in sewers would be a pretty big jump for me, so it's, I don't know if that's-
So, do you wanna vote? I'll, I'll amend my motion to approve the water rate, um, increase to five percent. Can I hear a second here?
Yeah.
You wanna vote on just the water rate for now?
It's by me, all favor of the water rate?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye to that. Sewer rates?
Okay, so I, I'll continue my, um, offering of recommending the fifteen percent increase on sewer rates for the coming year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and further discussion?
I'm heading along here, seeing what David's gonna vote for. It's gonna be on it, but, uh, yeah, I know, it seems, it seems steep, um, and I know, yeah, I'm personally gonna be impacted by it, so it's, it's hard to vote yes for fifteen percent increase on something and feel unclear about it all.
And unfortunately, we held off on it over the past few years.
That's the thing, right.
Which, uh, is why we're faced with it.
And, I'm sorry, he's not here, I have to channel him.
John.
John Musc Evans, for years, said that we made a mistake by not increasing these rates, okay?
So, you know, now we're done.
May, may I, for just a second? And, and like I said, this, this fifteen percent is all about being able to have my operational budget with the three staff members in place for next year, I just, um-
This is purely just funding operations.
Correct.
Has nothing to do with capital management.
And, 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 you know, for, for new board members, D E P. is very strict on our, our staffing plan and what we do and what we don't do, I, I wanted to get that out too, so, we have to be very cautious of what we cut and how we cut. You know, that's, that's why D E P. and, um, they, they wanted a sanitary survey, and they also had me bring Guy and I in to do a reevaluation on our staffing plan, so, um, there's that piece of it too, it's not just what I wanna fix or not fix or do, but there's also, um, we're mandated by D E P. on a lot of the stuff that we have to do.
David, you have something?
Yeah, just looking at the numbers, understanding that, you know, the cost increases that are likely to occur just because fuel goes up and chemicals go up and, uh, you know, we're kind of in a situation where you're rescuing the, uh, the sewer enterprise fund, so, this year it has to be a steep increase. We can certainly commit ourselves to streamlining operations, managing debt, managing capital, and looking at alternative funding sources and maybe even state-funded sewer rate relief programs, um, but the first year has gotta be a big step.
And this is the second year I, I have trimmed my budget, I've looked over, I've gone through it, you know, if we could get a relief on the, uh, the, uh, the sludge, which is, I'm guessing a couple of years out at this point, um, again, I've been through it with a five-tooth comb a couple of times, you know, there's, there's probably maybe some small adjustments, depending on, you know, sometimes your chemicals come in lower, and it's a good savings per year, but, again, in volatile, they might go up beyond the previous year, the following year, so.
This is a, a comment, I'm not, you know, saying that your budget is off the wall or anything else, or needs to be shaved down more, because, you know, we've had a conversation that we've, we've done what you think you can at this point to save money. I'm just looking at it from the voter's perspective of, you know, we've got an increase in house values, we've got the ninety-five dollars for the, you know, other projects in town, and, and everything else just stacked, and I, the water, now we got sewer, and it's, it's all, it's all adding up.
And that's why we couldn't support a general override.
Right.
You know, because that just would fly at this point either.
Right. So, I, I don't know, maybe through taxation in the future, it might be something to look at, it's kind of, you know, especially since the, we all benefit from, as a town, from the commercial enterprises that use sewer, but-
Yeah, and I think something too, and, and I'm gonna put my hand here just in case David comes at me. I do think this year we need to take a much closer look, again, just get, make sure everybody has their head wrapped around the administrative chargebacks to the, and the impact on the, the enterprise funds. Again, I have some level of comfort, 'cause I've been looking at that for a long time, but I think it's always worth, um, a fresh look, you know?
Yeah, I'd love to see some information, just that's, you know, more of a, you know, I'm so used to looking at balance sheets and stuff like that from a business perspective, and I see the budgets and everything that we have, but it's really hard to get a feel for revenues on those as well as expenses over the past five years.
So, the good news is-
It's right here, I didn't get to that part when I was, um-
The, um, when the annual report comes out?
Yeah.
If, if you're used to looking at balance sheets and income statements, this will actually make more sense to you.
All right.
Um, than, because they, they lay it out just that way.
Yeah. So, if we were to look at chargebacks, and let's just say we could drastically decrease chargebacks in some way, would that make a increase like this, um, not as necessary or not needed?
Yes, because if revenue back into the enterprise fund-
Right.
-is a way of looking at it.
Just like, just the, the huge amount of the chargebacks that you're getting, I feel like that, you know, it's, it's revenue that basically your department's raising that's going elsewhere in town, which is tough, we've seen.
Well, you know, just so you know, we've looked at a lot of things, um, we looked at, you know, as, as far as last year, and looked at quarterly billing, is there any way we can do the billing from our office? Which could save in chargebacks, you know, the collector's office would collect, we would, okay. So, then I ran into the I T. issue, we can't do it down there because of the I T. issue, so that, that has to be addressed first, so, you know, everything seems to have its steps that we're a little behind, but-
But we can put ourselves on a path-
Yes, yes.
To make that happen, it may take a couple of years.
Yeah, you know, and I, yeah, I think, Molly, you know, I've talked about that, David and I have talked about it, so, um, as far as, yeah, I mean, bringing, you know, a lot of the stuff we do in-house now, I mean, our, our operators actually inspectors that go out there too. I mean, you know, we don't, we don't have an officials, you know, we, we have a lot of this, we're lacking a lot of positions other D P W.s have, but we're very unique, that we have skilled people that do that, those things. So, you know, the belts have been tightened, I mean, I'm pretty impressed what we can get done in the department with what we have with staffing, both water and sewer. Uh, we have three operators in each division, and they're responsible for the infrastructure and the plants, so, um, there's a lot to do. I wish, I would certainly would love to bring better information to you, and again, I'm not, I'm, I'm just bringing you the facts that come out of the study and where we're at with the numbers, I mean, that's, that's all I can do.
Is motion on the table?
One second.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
No. How about aye?
Three more? With a absentee?
We'd have to abstain.
Right on, that's true too. All right, uh, that just concludes the regular meeting, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'll make a motion. Actually, there are no more announcements or anything?
No more announcements.
I think we got them all.
All right.
Make a motion that, uh, select board goes into executive session for the provisions of Mas Jumbo Law, Chapter thirty A., Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, um, if an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the bargaining and the position of the public body, and the chair so declares, um, and this is relative to the police union.
Why don't you just say?
You don't need to say. As chair- As chair, I declare, um, we'll go into executive session for, uh, police union negotiations, uh, if, uh, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body.
Is there a second?
Give a second.
Go call vote, Stanley?
Aye.
Phil?
Yes.
Chuglow?
Yes.
And that's not to reconvene an open session also.
Who's, who's Stanley?
Target having two.
Two first names.
It's like a Stanley and Stelletts, right?
Good night, everybody, we'll see you tomorrow night at the town meeting, May-
Seven o'clock.
Third. Be there early to get a seat, and it's also in the gym.